I'd like to call the board the regular meeting of the Board of Education, March 27th, 2019. Please rise for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The mission statement: We are committed to donuts. No, that's not our mission statement.
Nobody eats donuts in this district.
I've lost control of the meeting.
That happened a long time ago.
It happened years ago. Thank you, Dan. We are committed to academic achievement and success for all students in a safe environment. In partnership with families and our community, our mission is to promote confidence, inspire a passion for learning, and prepare our students to become responsible global citizens. Do I have a motion to approve the revised agenda?
Motion.
Second. You've got that?
Yes.
Good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So Carrie, any questions or comments from interested citizens?
None.
None. Any updates on questions or comments raised from interested citizens in the past, Elsie?
No.
This is really interesting. Okay. Approval of minutes. A motion to approve the minutes of the March 6th, 2019, regular meeting. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded twice. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So Carrie, we have a presentation for the lead event from Mr. Cassie, Michael Masano.
Yes.
Yes?
It's their team, the lead team.
And the lead team.
Okay. So we're gonna have Mr. Masano. Where is he? There you are. You wanna start first? Yes.
You kick it off, and then whatever happens happens.
Thank you. So we have a little presentation set up for all of you. In recognition, which one? This one? Pick a mic. We have a small presentation set up for all of you to demonstrate, one, what our students have brought back from the LEAD conference, and, two, our appreciation of the support of the Board of Education and the Cabinet in supporting this trip year after year for our middle school students. So without further ado, I'm gonna hand it over to people who know what they're talking about, and hand it over to our awesome LEAD students from Monroe Woodbury Middle School.
Am I ready to play?
So let's, you can hit play.
Yep.
You guys, why don't you come over here and kinda speak into them.
There's a mic over here. You guys wanna sit?
Sit down.
Oh, okay. Over here? Alright. Alright, got it. Okay.
Hi. Oh, wow, that's cool. Okay, hi, I'm Leila. Hi, okay, hey, guys. Okay. I'm really nervous, I'm sorry. Okay, okay, okay.
Don't worry. We're nervous, too.
So, I'm pretty mu-- so the question that I had to kinda like explain is what is the LEAD conference? So I have, the Monroe Woodbury LEAD conference trip gives the students an opportunity to gain new leadership skills. The trip also allows students to develop a better understanding of who they are as a person. The LEAD conference is a two-day learning experience. The first night, the students listen to motivational speakers and learn a little more about the conferences. The next day, the students get to choose what seminars or workshops they want to attend. The seminars cover all subjects such as bullying, leadership, academics, respect, current events, etc. The students enjoy the DC trip not only for the conferences alone, but also for the experience of going to various places in DC. Both the high schoolers and middle schoolers were able to go sightseeing and visit many of the monuments DC had to offer. The Monroe Woodbury DC trip enabled students to learn new leadership skills and bring them back to the community. The LEAD conference is an amazing, unforgettable experience that all students could enjoy.
Good job.
All of the kids that went to the LEAD conference got to not only experience how to be a better leader, but also made many new lasting memories outside of the conferences. When we first arrived in Washington DC, we got to experience the New Zealand Museum, which allowed us to see some of the biggest worldwide events in history. This was the starting point of many amazing new bonds formed on this trip. On our second night there, we went on a walking tour of the heart of DC and got to see many historic monuments such as the Jefferson Memorial, the Lincoln Memorial, the Vietnam Veterans Memorial, and many more amazing monuments. Getting to go around Washington with friends, both old and new, made the experience that much more influential. Seeing these monuments, honoring heroes in American history, after learning how to be just like them, made the experience that much more inspirational. The experience of going on the monuments gave us a chance to connect even more with the kids in our school.
This trip gave many of us students a chance to create bonds with people we would not normally be able to see or get the chance to talk to. This applies to not only people that attend Monroe Woodbury, but also people from different places such as Guam. Personally, Danielle and I met six new friends from Guam who also told us a lot about what it's like to live somewhere so different from here.
My name is Emma, and I'm actually gonna be telling you guys a little bit about the physical conferences that we went to, which is where we learned a lot of the information that will actually benefit our Student Council and National Junior Honor Society. So on the LEAD trip, the students from our school had an amazing time at different monuments, restaurants, and museums. But of course, LEAD wasn't just about sightseeing. On the trip, once-in-a-lifetime information and advice was displayed at different seminars. Students learned team-building activities, leadership skills, and most importantly, how to be a better member of society. One seminar in particular really stood out to me. It was about the butterfly effect, a scientific phenomenon where the small flap of a butterfly's wings in one part of the world can trigger a hurricane in another. Although the theory itself is very interesting, the leaders of the seminar weren't discussing the weather. Their idea of how to use the butterfly effect in real life not only has the opportunity to create a community-wide impact, but is one of the simplest and easiest things someone can do: be kind. In the seminar, they showed us an experiment they had done where they walked around school and gave out as many compliments as they could to different students, hoping that like the butterfly effect, their kindness would trickle through the school, eventually building up to all students being kind to one another. And they predicted that if someone was treated kindly, they were more likely to treat another person kindly. And inevitably, their prediction rang true. Throughout their school, kids were helping each other and being kind to one another. I believe that if the Monroe Woodbury students who were on the conference can use what they learned in the seminar in our school, we could create a massive impact. The information from not only this seminar, but every seminar we attended will help our students to become leaders and friends within our school community. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Julia. Not only did we get to experience all these different things, but we got to take a big share of what we learned at the conference and get to bring it back to better our school. As leaders of the Student Council in our school, it's really important to take what we learned and to share it with our school and community. For example, Liam and I are creating a program that will benefit our school. This program is called Big Little Middle, and it's designed to help the incoming sixth graders adapt to this new environment. Each eighth-grade buddy will be assigned about five to six incoming sixth-grade students.
This program will also be beneficial to everyone, including all languages in our school. Part of this program involves leadership. The eighth graders will have to be leaders and mentors to sixth-grade students. This program will also help connect the school and the student, and bring the students closer together. This will also be beneficial in the, not only in the middle school, but in the high school. When the sixth graders are going to the high school, they will know someone who can help them. And on behalf of everyone who attended the LEAD conference, we wanna thank you for your support.
Thank you.
So I just wanted to take a moment to recognize a bunch of people who made this trip possible. First of all, the advisors, Kristen Carter, who did an amazing job organizing, was not able to be here tonight, along with Ms. Kathy Hassler, who is here in the audience. We have chaperones of Mrs. Collins and Mr. Collins from the middle school go along on the trip. So we're very thankful for them in making the trip possible and chaperoning our students. And last but not least, I wanna thank Leila, Danielle, Jenna, Emma, Julia, and Liam for putting this presentation together completely on their own and bringing such valuable information back to the middle school to make an impact. Thank you, and thank you for our presentation.
Thank you. It's a great program, and a number of us followed, a number of us in the whole community followed it on Facebook as you posted things. So thank you, thank you for that, and it's terrific. We're glad that we can do something like this.
Next is high school.
Next is high school.
High school LEAD. It's set up for me.
Yeah.
Sorry.
Good evening. Thank you for letting us present this evening. The high school trip, we took 46 students down to Washington DC, but we have a little bit more to our trip. To even become a LEAD member in the high school, you have to go through a rigorous process where you apply, and there's a rubric used to choose the students who will be attending the trip. And this year, as part of the commitment to going to LEAD, students had to do a community service project for the school, as well as a community service project for the community. And for the community, our students are teaming up with the Wounded Warriors organization and are finishing up their project with that. And we also used we.org, which is an organization that talks about how to bring strategies into the community to empower people and to help people out with all that they are doing. This evening, we have two short videos, as well as some presenters from the high school that will talk about the LEAD trip. And we're gonna start off with our video to be with. So now I'd like to bring up Jayden, he says, and come up and speak about this video, which was our touring part of the trip.
Hi, my name is Jayden Talber, and we began our LEAD trip by first stopping in Baltimore. When we arrived in Baltimore, we stopped at the USS Constellation for a quick photo before having dinner at Bubble Gum Shrimp Company. The next day, we headed for DC. In between the conference schedules, we were able to visit many of our nation's national monuments, including the Lincoln Memorial, the Thomas Jefferson Memorial, the World War II Memorial, the Korean War Veterans Memorial, the FDR Memorial, and the Ewa Jiwa Memorial. The most impactful visit was to Arlington National Cemetery, where we were able to go on a trolley tour which highlighted graves of important people in our history and the shaping of our nation. However, the changing of the guard ceremony was something that I'll never forget. The cemetery is our nation's most hallowed ground. Being able to tour and experience all of our nation's tributes and honors of people and events which shaped the country we live in today was a memorable part of attending the LEAD trip.
Hello, everyone. I'm Ethan Gallinger. My trip to the LEAD conference this year has been another amazing experience and such a joyous trip. But before MW students got to interact with student leaders around the world just like us, we got to spend three terrific days paving our way through Baltimore and Washington DC. Our first entertaining museum to kick off this trip was Ripley's Believe It or Not. This museum showcases remarkable artifacts and thrilling interactive exhibits. Another museum that I found very amusing was the Cryptology Museum. This museum allows students to get a glimpse on how important cryptology is and a chance to learn how beneficial cryptology has impacted our history. After the Cryptology Museum, we used those skills to try and escape the room. About 20 kids per room worked together to solve a bunch of puzzles and riddles in their room. This next quirky museum, called the Museum on O and O Street, was a Victorian mansion filled with hundreds of antiques and over 70 secret rooms that we had to go and search for. Trust me, it was very easy to get lost in there. The last, most important museum that we went to was the Holocaust Museum. This living memorial teaches millions of people the dangers of hatred and the need to prevent genocide. The only sounds you heard in the museum were the voice recordings and your own footsteps. This trip was fantastic, and I hope every student gets the opportunity to bark on this trip. Thank you.
Colin, you're gonna talk about the team-building activities at night, right?
Yeah. Hi, everyone, my name is Colin Duffy. Before the LEAD conference, the MW high school students were put together to build new relationships through teamwork. One of the activities that we did was Jenga, and after each block was removed, someone would have to answer a prompt. This allowed us to become more comfortable with each other and work as a team. We also were put into a human pretzel where our arms were crossed and put into a knot, and we had to escape. Communication in this activity was key, and it helped us all bond and once again work as a team. All in all, the activities that we did as a group really helped break the ice between the students from MW, and I believe it benefited us all. Thank you.
So while we were at the LEAD conference, this is the first time that a Monroe Woodbury group actually presented a session at the conference, and to speak about that, I have Maddie and Jenna.
So we decided as a group that it'd be a good idea to share to other students around the world what MW Cares Day was about. So we came up with a workshop, and we submitted our idea to the people in charge of LEAD, and then we got approved. So what our workshop was about was we started off with a game, Cross the Line, which is when you split the classroom into two groups and in half, and you all stand in line and you ask a question, and if the question applies to you, you step forward. And this made like everyone in the room feel accepted and like comfortable, and that was one of the main like ideas of MW Cares Day, so it really like corresponded. Then we met after school before DC, and we came up with a PowerPoint to explain like what MW Cares Day is, like how long it took to come up, and like all the fundraising we did, and like everything about that. And then we did the activity, Maddie?
Then we did an activity where like we had big pieces of paper with the MW Cares like compassion, acceptance, respect, empowerment, and success written on it. And each one of like the presenters had, we had the people in the workshop split up into groups, and we each ran our own little group and asked everyone what they felt that compassion meant to them, acceptance, respect, empowerment, and success. And I think we got pretty good responses from most of them. And yeah.
And it was like really cool because there's like students from all over the world, and like they were so like intrigued about our day, and like, yeah.
Thank you, ladies. The exciting thing was, students would choose to come to the workshop. So we had approximately 50 kids who chose to be there to see our day, and the girls, as well as all the other members did a great job. Now we have a quick video about the workshop itself, and then we'll wrap it up.
I hope that as you listen to our speakers and their stories, you're inspired, and that you understand that no matter how difficult life can be, there's always hope. And so MW Cares is the district's commitment not only to act out of it, but socially and emotionally as well.
It's taken a year and a half to come to fruition. You were going to hear stories, you were gonna listen to the lives of people today and go through what they have gone through. It is amazing. We were able last night to meet at least 50 of the speakers with their stories. The energy they're gonna transmit to you, the message they're gonna give you is really gonna help us all raise our awareness.
I opened it to some students actually. Yeah, it's all around, it's like...
I think MW Cares is amazing. I love it so much.
I've learned that as long as you have the right attitude, you can always overcome the odds.
Use strategies, use your skills, and use people around you to help you in your journey the rest of your life.
So we used that video to try to show what the day was to those that's the students that attended our conference, and we think that that video, thanks to Dana Kristansky, really helped give the message of what the day was like and had everybody there be able to experience it. Before I wrap up, I would like to thank Ms. Susan Aliseya, Ms. Karen Ayres, and Ms. Dawn Talber for chaperoning this trip. And we are planning on doing the trip again next year, and we'll be starting the application process in the very near future. So again, that our LEAD conference in the high school is open up to any student who's interested in having the experience of being a leader and understanding what the conference is about.
Mr. Cassie, I think that Maddie, Carrie, and Jenna wanna say a few more words. You can, you got some, Jenna.
We just wanted to say a huge thank you to Mr. Cassie for allowing us to have MW Cares Day and coming up with it.
So we think it was a very impactful day for all of us, and I think we're still learning a lot from it, and it's really the day that you just want to give it. So thank you for that.
So the students wanted to create something for you to show you how much they appreciated the day, and that you can come and join the school.
That's awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
You guys wanna... They gotta get a picture.
I would just like to say thank you to Mr. Cassie and Ms. Talber and the rest of the chaperones for taking us on a great trip that I'll remember for the rest of my life. So thank you for that. So I think that a huge appreciation has to go out to my mom, Dawn Talber, for the grace of her staff. She spent many days and even spent long nights trying to make this trip a great time for everyone who attended, and she was always thinking about other people. So on behalf of everyone who attended the trip, thank you.
And I just wanna give a shout-out to Jake Gardner, because he was the one who put together the canvas for Mr. Cassie and the high school, and to Dana for working on, Kristansky for working on our two videos and creating them for us. Thank you. John is giving me somewhat of a look, but I wanna say something because I truly listen to everything that students say. And a young lady got up from the middle school, I can't remember which one, but you talked about the butterfly effect, right? This is truly an example of the butterfly effect. This MW Cares has made such an impact, and it is endless. We have no idea what and what are the wonderful things that are gonna come of this. So I am so appreciative of John Cassie, Dawn Talber, and the committee for putting all of your efforts. I know that your mom has spent a lot of time doing this work, but it really matters. And so I am very appreciative, the community appreciates. Thank you, thank you, thank you for everything that you do.
I just wanted to recognize the core committee members that are here tonight. We have Mary Alastair, who couldn't be here, from ADAC, who's on our core committee for MW Cares. Lauren Savino, I believe is here. Lauren, if you would stand up, please. Thank you. Jessica Wright, a teacher here at the high school. And Ms. Steve Aliseya, a special ed teacher. And we've seen one of our special ed teachers in the high school who all helped us prepare the day and make it a success that it is. Speaking of the day, Ms. Rodriguez, on our, we've recognized you many times for the dedication you gave to us and the permission and the leap of faith you took. But we do have one more gift for you, and I promise this is the last one, for the MW Cares and for your commitment to us. So I'd like to present you with this gift, and hopefully when you open it and look at it, every time you look at it, it'll remind you of what we have done here in our district to move things forward and raise awareness of compassion, acceptance, respect, empowerment, and success. And lastly, in the video, you saw one of our speakers, Ian Hockley, was in the video. He will be in our school next Thursday doing two presentations for our students, or all students, and a night presentation at 7:00 PM at the high school auditorium. So please come out, selfish, please come out and support that as well. Ms. Rodriguez.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, I think this program, as I said, is wonderful, and I appreciate...
Yeah, I mean, I think this program, as I said, is wonderful. And I appreciate, Dawn, but I appreciate the board members and the parents and the community and the students that can get behind this and have it happen. And everybody thanks the board, and that's very nice. But basically, all we do is say, "Yeah, it's a great idea." And then some board members go way beyond that. And it's you folks that really make this happen, and I thank you. Because us sitting here doesn't do it. It's you standing up and coming to the plate to do it. So, thanks. Is that it for? Do we go to the next agenda item, boss?
Yes, we should, but this is so nice. Let's just pause for a second and enjoy it, and then we can go on to the next thing. So, we're ready. Let's go. You want me to open the present? Okay, hold on.
That wasn't a pause. I said, "Let's pause." Okay, go. It wasn't a pause.
I need scissors.
You'll need more time to put just the initial.
I can't open it. I think we have scissors. Okay, I'll give it to the students. Can you open it? Do we have scissors? Can we open it? No, you can rip it like that, yeah.
Or stretch it and then pull it off.
Maybe it's a brick for the wall.
They did that already. Oh, my God, how beautiful. Is this a book? No way! Oh, look at this, how pretty it is. It's a book. It probably has all the pictures inside, right? Thank you so much. Thank you, thank you. Okay, now we can.
A presentation by Michael Masano for the Code of Conduct.
Then we'll have a break. I think if we take a break, they really have, yeah, it's fine, whatever you want. You're the boss. You're the boss.
Folks, since people are leaving.
We're going to take a break.
We're going to take a break at the end of the Code of Conduct, and then we'll sign all of the government students. You just stand up to do something, and people flee. No, we're going to keep going, and then we're going to have a short break after this. And we'll sign the papers after that.
Okay. So, as our technology gets set up here.
And then we'll talk about it. Just say you have this.
I just want to introduce. We're ready to go. Just want to introduce the committee. The work that you're about to see and be updated on is the product of many, many people over many hours discussing, reading, studying, revisiting, and making sure that our Code of Conduct is both relevant and applicable to the needs that our district K-12 faces today. So, I'd like to thank all the participants, all the people who have played a role in this, including the committee members, Karen Brock, Caitlin Caldwell, Roger Davis, John Flanagan, Brian Jades, Karen Jordan, who could not be here tonight and wanted to be. She has a major role in this. Karen Morales, Kristen Randherr, Nikki Reagan, Christine Ricker. This is also in collaboration with Frank Scalante, Director of Safety and Security, as well as Lori Hock in coordinating the athletic Code of Conduct with our Code of Conduct as a district. So, all of those people have made this work possible, and I can't thank them enough for the countless hours that they've spent working on this document. Next slide for me, please. Thanks. So, where this came from, I want to put the slide up here of our district vision. Together, we will inspire success based on a foundation of kindness, respect, honesty, and integrity. It's rooted, the Code of Conduct has to be rooted in this vision. It is a product of the strategic planning that has occurred as a result of our Strategic Planning Committee. I was a part of the task force that was responsible for, led by Denise Guerrero and Christine Ricker, on social-emotional support as well as student behavior. Because in the data that we received from the survey that we did, we saw that there were some problem areas, some areas for growth, when it came to behavior and expectations, behavioral expectations across our buildings. So, one of the things we wanted to do was make sure that the basis of that concern, the code by which we are enforcing and expressing what those behavioral expectations are, was clear, direct, and again, relevant to what we are facing today in 2019, which is very different than what we faced 10 years ago and 20 years ago. So, this is a document that is designed, obviously, not just to be relevant today, but to be adaptable for years to come.
So, it was interesting as we met. We all had the same goals. We want to decrease our suspension rate, our removals from the classroom, because the most important time for us is when our students are in front of us in the classroom. We want to make sure that we are giving them the most opportunity and access to the curriculum. And looking at that, you know, when we talk about when, times when students have difficulty in the classroom academically, we have supports that we put into place. We put strategies in, we give them increased tiers of support. But when we look at their behaviors, we want to do more than just put consequences. If we, kids can't read, we teach them to read. If kids are not behaving, we can't just remove them from the classroom. So, Karen Jordan, Christine Ricker have definitely taken the lead on the clinical supports and the classroom supports, whether it is I Choose Love or the dialectical behavior therapy. But we're also looking at the different categories of student behavior and what those different disciplinary infractions would be. So, as you look through the document, you're going to see them as 1, 2, 3, and 4. Sometimes you're going to look through that, and depending on the behavior, some of those are non-negotiables. It is what it is. But more often, what you'll see is that depending on the level, we're taking into account the student's age, their developmental readiness, their history of infraction. So, you'll see that sometimes it's just going to go straight down the line, but other times, we're looking at where does the age of the child fall and what would the appropriate level of consequence be? And what was really great was that we had, I don't want to say for the first time, but it was great to have K-1 represented in the same time as the high school represented and talking about, how do we make this common language? How do we make this so that our students are exposed to the same expectations, the same common expectations, no matter what 2 to 5 building they're in, or no matter what K-1 to 5 middle school, high school?
So, building upon our objectives of providing classroom supports and clinical supports, we truly believe that social-emotional learning is the best way to cultivate and nurture a safe classroom and a safe school climate. It's the best way to decrease disciplinary referrals and to really build skills for our students and help them really be able to problem solve. As we broke into subcommittees, it was very easy for us to incorporate our task force goals into our Code of Conduct work, since they go hand in hand. From the social-emotional perspective, we began researching numerous social-emotional curriculums and attended social-emotional conferences that showcased different programs. For the second part of our objective, providing clinical supports, we assessed the capacity of our clinical staff to effectively support the increased social-emotional needs of our students and realized that we needed to equip our clinical staff with intensive therapeutic techniques and advanced trainings.
As we also, oops, sorry. Nope, that's okay. Oh, I'm so sorry. As we reviewed our current Code of Conduct and discussed our behavioral expectations, we also took a very close look at our evolving needs and areas emerging with our evolving culture, and that includes access to technology, social media, how student interactions change over time. We've also examined how the code and behavioral expectations follow the trajectory of students' age and development from kindergarten to graduation, because that's what we have, we have them for that long, and that's so important. As Dr. Morales shared, and as the committee has worked through this, it's been really powerful to sit down across grade levels to discuss the language that's used to identify and discuss behaviors with students, how this is taught to students from sometimes four years old until they graduate.
All right. So, how are we going to get there, our roadmap? We are very excited to report that we have contracted with cognitive and behavioral consultants. They'll be conducting a four-day training for our PPS staff in May and June. They will be working with over 30 members of our clinical staff to teach them about dialectical behavioral therapy, DBT. As we implement DBT with our students, our clinical staff will receive ongoing training, clinical feedback, and refinement of their counseling skills from the consultant team from cognitive behavioral consultants. Based upon our SEL, our social-emotional learning research, we've chosen the social-emotional curriculum, Choose Love, developed by Scarlett Lewis. She presented to our staff on November 6th, our superintendent conference day, and it was well, well-received by all our staff. Currently, across the district, we have classrooms with psychologists and social workers teaming and co-teaching the curriculum for our students with the general education teachers. To further support implementation of Choose Love, we have Scarlett Lewis returning to the district for two days of professional development and in-service for October.
For the group in the subcommittee who have focused on developing the Code of Conduct and revisiting the Code of Conduct, we've done extensive research in examining our own Code of Conduct, its evolution over time, as well as different Code of Conduct documents from nearby districts and districts similar to ours. We've also conducted a crosswalk comparison examining just the actual layout of our own Code of Conduct so that we can find ways to make it more accessible and clear to our students, as well as our staff and our entire community. That's happening as, right now as we speak. We're also looking to ultimately develop a discipline grid, which reflects more specific levels of infraction across grade levels K through 12 that's communicated to students explicitly and taught in alignment with the desired behaviors. As a Code of Conduct is really just the list of what we want kids to do and what the resulting actions or disciplinary action could be if those expectations are not met or upheld.
So, as you've heard, this is an ongoing process, and our next step, our next steps are to put together a review committee that takes all stakeholders, and our students, some teachers, faculty, staff members, parents, to hear and share with the larger review committee the changes that were made and to also take feedback to adjust and modify even further with that larger committee. We will also do a site visit to the enlarged school district in Newburgh to visit and to kind of see how another district operates. It's always good to be a fly on the wall and to see from an outsider's point of view to take all the great ideas that are happening elsewhere. So, that site visit is being planned as we speak. It has not been ironed out yet, but we're trying to get that in place. We also would like our legal team, Ingram and Smith, to take a look at the Code of Conduct to get their input, to make sure that they're happy with the way it is laid out and the language. And then, of course, we're going to come back in June or July and to present to you again the final draft. So, this ongoing process, as you've been hearing, is a lengthy process, and it's something that we're looking forward to continuing. And the last piece is the implementation with our kids and the day-to-day operations of our schools.
Any questions from the board?
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment because Dawn, myself, and Dr. Hassler were able to go to Pine Tree with Mr. Jades and Mr. Martin and see three of the classes, I believe, 2nd grade, 5th grade, and one of the special education classes, correct, for Choose Love. And it was a phenomenal program. And I know that I took away from it what the teachers were bringing into it, and the kids, just all three levels of students, got something out of it, and it was taught in three very different ways. So, I thought it lent it a lot of flexibility for the staff to be able to put their spin on it. And I know that, I mean, we were actually laying on the floor in the one class doing a little meditation. Hopefully, there's no photos of that. But it was, it was great because all of the kids were so receptive to it. So, I hope to be able to see, I think it's coming over to the middle school, and so, yeah, so hopefully that'll be received well.
I just wanted to add to that. In its simplest form, it was just Choose Love, right? Choose Love over any other negative emotion, you know, empowering them to make that conscious effort immediately. So, it was a great program. It is a great program.
Any other comments or questions? Thank you. Thank you very much. We look forward to the next stage, and we appreciate all of the efforts and how it also, hopefully, all ties into MW Cares and all of the efforts throughout the district so that the students feel safe and empowered so that they can learn the things they're supposed to learn. So, thank you very much. And we thank Dawn for bringing his dinner leftovers in.
Oh, that's all for Elsie. The chef prepared that just for her.
And we'll now take a short break and sign any students' papers. We are, we are back from the break, and no board business took place during the break except signing a lot of government students' papers. And taking selfies for some reason. Matt Kravitz and Patrick will present the general personnel considerations for this year's budget. Grass doesn't grow on a busy street.
I'm going to write that down.
Is that the line you're using?
That's the line I'm using.
I appreciate that.
You're welcome.
So, thank you for the opportunity to present the general personal considerations for 2019, 2020, 2021. But before I start, I would like to send Patrick through all of this and kind of walk me through, if I had anything I knew of Johnny Merrill, the Thorough Office, Tommy Mora, and then everyone in the P13 team who was supporting. It's mine or our hope to share details with you that will basically explain the numbers that represent almost 80% of the district's overall budget. So, our first slide focuses on district-wide salary.
The first thing, I'll start and I'll end this presentation with education is a people business. That's what we're about. We have a lot of people who do a lot of great work every day. The number of staff, and what you'll see is the number of staff and the collectively bargained salaries that accompany them. That's what we use when crafting the district-wide budget. This includes, well, there's a bullet up there that talks about how people get paid, basically. So, anyone who's a contracted employee, just for people who aren't aware and the general listening public, people who are contracted typically get, they're on a salary scale. So, they get, every year, they get contractual raises, and depending on where they are in the salary scale, they get a step increase as well. That doesn't include all of our employees, because what you'll see a little bit later on is that we have an incredibly seasoned staff. We have a lot of staff members that started here many years ago, and they haven't left, and that's been a benefit to us. But with that, they only, they only receive the contractual increase every year. So, that impacts the overall number. And for example, just so, again, just so you know, our teachers, everyone has a different number of salary steps. So, our teachers have 19 steps in their contract, our teaching assistants have 16, our MWEA, which are clerical, they have 17, and so on. And also, it's important to know that right now, we have, we have four bargaining groups in the district. We have three contracts that are currently settled where we're not negotiating, and we do have one group that we're currently negotiating with, and that's our MWTA, and that made up of our teachers and our teaching assistants. So, what we're able to do when we have settled contracts, we're able to use real-life data, exact numbers, because we know exactly what they're going to make next year. With that other group, what we did is we conservatively estimated what the amount of money that we would need to cover their contractual increases and their steps. And with that, so all of that included, we, takes us to the 1.64% increase from last year to this year. And I think that's important to understand. In addition, this factors, this budgetary number factors in the number of retirements district-wide. So, we've had the, some people retired during So we've had, some people retired during this current year, and we'll talk about what that means for next year. And then we've had a handful of people just retired recently for the nineteen-twenty school year. That includes five teachers at this point and five teaching assistants. Do I expect more? There could be more, and we'll talk about that later on in the, in the slides as well. So the way salaries are broken down by function code is, there are three major or main areas. One is our buildings and grounds, then we have transportation, and then we have instruction. So our buildings and grounds are the group of men and women who keep our buildings clean, keep our buildings safe. They plow when nobody else can get out of their driveway. Just so you know, we have about, we have sixty-four custodial and maintenance employees plus our administrative staff members. I should probably change that, huh? Thanks, man. I appreciate the help. I still appreciate it. No, okay. So our custodial and maintenance employees, nobody said anything, oh, no, you guys didn't say anything either. So our custodial, thanks, Elsie, I appreciate it.
Maybe grass does grow on a busy street.
So we have sixty-four custodians and maintenance workers plus our administrators and clerical who all get factored into this. The 1.93% increase reflects a stability in terms of the contractual salary increases. Trans, good, thanks. Transportation is another function code. Anything that starts with the numbers five, five in your, in your handouts deals with transportation. So I will, you know, have a little shameless plug. All across New York State, we talked about this, districts can't find bus drivers. And we've used, as a district, we've used our Facebook account, we've used our print media, we've used the, you know, brand-new sign outside of Central Valley and the older sign outside the high school. And now I figure since there are thousands of people right now either watching this now or will be watching it because our, you know, with our incredibly high Nielsen rating, I figured if you're interested in driving a bus as a sub or a permanent driver, please come on out, contact HR or contact our transportation department. I just wanted to start with that. But our drivers, we have one hundred and eight regular drivers and twenty-seven substitute drivers as it stands today. And they put on about ten thousand miles every single day on our buses. And this number is reflective of a few things. You'll see the negative four-point-eight-seven from two years ago. What we did two years ago is we under-budgeted for our transportation, the number of runs. So as the school year went through, last year, we said, whoa, we have, either the needs of our students have changed, the number of runs have increased, and what we did is last year we increased our, our overall number in transportation to be slightly higher. This year now, the 1.84%, that again represents more of a stability because all those contracts are settled for the people within the transportation department.
Are we anticipating getting new drivers? Do we need to change that? Should we be putting a little bit of a cushion in that number, hoping that we hire more transportation, or is that going to just satisfy what we have right now?
Do you want to take that one?
Yes, I think that number, Chris, is a number of positions that we need, and the issue really is, a lot of the positions are vacant.
Okay, so it's in there?
So it is, it is in there, it is budgeted, and what, you know, Matt is referring to is that, that lack of sufficient drivers.
If we have one hundred and eight, we really need one twenty. We're budgeted for one twenty, even though we have one. Okay.
And just a, just a piece of history, what we used to have is, we used to have slightly more regular drivers, but we also had a larger sub pool. So our sub numbers used to be, you know, fifty or close to sixty. Now with them in the mid twenties, when we don't have drivers who can't come for a particular run or if they're not feeling well, we don't have as many sub drivers to cover those runs.
Susan.
Is there a minimum age for the bus drivers?
So it's twenty-one.
Twenty-one.
Twenty-one years old. And again, just so you know, one of the things that we've advertised is, our sub rate is eighteen dollars and eighty-one cents, I think, an hour. And starting salary for a regular employee is twenty-one dollars and I believe seventy-one cents an hour.
So it's a career path for board members, right?
Yeah.
And the high end is, you know, in the low thirty-dollar range.
This is a statewide problem, though.
It's a nationwide problem at this point.
There's a shortage, yes.
And it's reflective of a stronger economy, so not as many people might, you know, be taking that. But our hope is even with the sign across from CV, you get a lot of people who are going to work every single day right across the street, and maybe not for the same amount of money, and maybe not for the same amount of flexibility. So our hope is, well, come on over here.
Have you had a lot of interest?
We've had some. The issue that we find is that even if people are interested, it takes that, we trained, and that's one of our things, we want to train people to get their CDL, which takes, there takes some time to get training. And then it could take upwards of three months to even get your scheduled road test completed. So it's, you know, run, 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 hurry up, and then, and then wait. So even if we do increase our numbers right now, a lot of those drivers won't even be able to drive for us until September.
That is pay training?
That is not pay training.
I'm going to ask.
It is not pay training.
With this being an nationwide problem, is there a way to petition, which is ridiculous, but the state to, like, push, like, why is, why do we have to wait three months to take a road test? Like, isn't there a way for the DMV to say, obviously, it's not just a trail, you know, truck driver's license, we're getting a bus driver's license, so?
Make it a priority.
So a way to petition to get more of these days?
Less days before, yeah, I think that's.
That could be a, we could call it a scoopus.
I think part of the issue, too, is the training. There's many weeks of training involved, and it's unpaid. So we've talked about ways to incentivize, provide a greater incentive for, for drivers.
When are the trainings provided? Are they like weekday trainings, daytime trainings?
During the week.
Have there been thoughts to evenings or weekends, just to give greater flexibility for someone who might want to transition from their current position into driving a bus for us, where they could still earn an income and yet train along the way?
Yeah, I think one of the logistical issues is we have one trainer, we have one driver-trainer who covers everybody. So we, that's certainly a great idea and something we have to figure out in terms of schedules, and if that would be a possibility.
If someone is already licensed, do they still need the training?
There is, I believe it's a minimal amount, it's a smaller amount of training. So we love that. When they come in and they're already driving or they have their license, it's, everything takes a lot.
Yeah, but there's like fifty thousand short on drivers in the U.S. right, right now. So I think anybody who's already...
There's, the glass is half-full.
Yeah.
But theoretically, they would have to take time off from their day job to get trained.
Yeah.
That's a problem.
That's a good point.
Is the trainer like a certified by New York State kind of trainer?
She's the head trainer.
So could we look to have additional people fit that capacity?
Sure, something I'm sure Ms. Russell would be quite okay with.
There's new training coming down the pike, February, actually, next year, where a part of the training is going to have to be done during the dark. Perhaps we'll...
Oh, okay, that makes sense.
We have to become a certified training center. This is the one I see.
Good question, thank you. All right, so our instructional function code is everything that starts with the two, and that includes our administration, our teachers, our teaching assistants, our AIS, our guidance, and anyone who basically is within the brick and mortar of a school building. Every day, we have five hundred and seventy-one teachers and a hundred and nineteen teaching assistants, in addition to our administrative staff and clerical staff who come to work every day and, you know, ready to impact the lives of our students. And then they go out and they do it. So again, the 1.44% is reflective of the three settled contracts that I mentioned earlier, and they get the real-time numbers, and then the estimate for the MWTA collective bargaining agreement. One of the things I mentioned earlier was the steps and the people who are on top step and how they get the percentage increase, but they don't get the step increase. One of the things that we looked at in terms of budgeting, we have a very seasoned staff, especially our teaching staff is incredibly seasoned, they've been here, they're dedicated, they've been here a lot of time, a lot of years, some of them. Fifty-six percent of our teachers next year will be at top step. So that number is inclusive of people who will get a pay raise, but that raise will be limited to the contractual raise and not the step. Okay. All right, now we move, so we have salary, and then we have benefits. Benefits are one of the reasons why people come to work, it's one of, well, it's a benefit having all these benefits. So, thanks, I appreciate that. I just made that up. I didn't even write that one down. So benefits overall are about a quarter of our entire budget every single year. I'll talk more about the health insurance on the next slide, but I just want you to know that our health insurance increase from this year to next, on that slide, is a very minimal increase, and we'll talk about what that means. The 3.9 number is driven by a couple of things. It's driven by everything else that comes in the benefits package, and that's our teacher retirement system contributions, our ERS, our employee retirement systems. So anyone who's not a teacher or a teaching assistant but are in the retirement systems or clerical and our drivers, we have to pay into that. It also includes the employee share payroll taxes, so social security and Medicare, worker compensation, employee life, and then disability and some other insurances, as well as dental and vision, and then retirement payouts, and I just want to explain that. What we did is, we don't want to be caught with not having enough money in this particular area should people choose to retire. And retiring is something that, it kind, there's an ebb and flow. But when you look back on the research, the last time we settled contracts, we had a higher number of people who retired. So right now, our number stands at twenty-three people overall who have retired either during the year or are retiring and won't be coming back next year as of right now. In the seventeen-eighteen year, where there was, where there was more stability in terms of the teacher contract, we had forty-nine retirees, of which twenty-seven were teachers in that one particular year. And what we don't want to do is have to start transferring money, so we want to be able to conservatively plan and budget for that, and that's the reason that that particular number is at the 3.9%. Do you want to add that?
You can say no. No.
And then the last, or one of the last slides is our health insurance. So health insurance is always a big, is a big number. Health insurance for us is, factors in our, fourteen percent of our budget is, our yearly budget is health insurance and what it costs us. I think one of the things that you really need to realize is that this number, the 0.14%, reflects stability, and it reflects the fact that we're part of the OU-BOSSes consortium. I think one of the things that we're incredibly fortunate to have in this district is, Patrick is on the Board of Trustees of that, that plan. So, not that we get inside information, but we have somebody who has proven time and again to the, I think, to the entire board and to the community that he knows what he's doing, and he's able to steer the ship. And when it comes to working with that consortium, I think we're all, feel like it's in good hands because Patrick's a part of that. I was so busy saying nice things about you. You're welcome. I'm done saying nice things about you.
You all did.
All right, so built into the health insurance figures, I just want to make sure that everybody realizes too, it's not just your, the health insurance for the active employees, there's also benefits in retirement and Medicare reimbursement. If you want more information about Medicare reimbursement, it's lengthy, and we can certainly answer those. If you don't want answers right now, we understand that as well. But one thing I want you to also realize that each year, the composition of the recipients of health insurance changes. So we, we don't have the same number of single people who are active employees and active employees who receive family coverage, that varies from year to year. The number of retirees who are single or active or Medicare I or Medicare II eligible, those change as well. And so what we did is, we, that number also includes contingencies for some of those changes. You have sometimes where you have people who are on a single plan and they have a baby. So now they move on to a family plan, or they get married, now they have a family plan, or they have a baby and now they have a family plan. You have some people who had a family plan and now they just need a single plan, and that's what that includes. And lastly, it's just basically the combination of both. So I mentioned the eighty percent number, and it's just under eighty percent. So when you look at your salary and your fringe benefits, you have a lot of money there. Right now, you'll see for the first time, it's the, it's one of the unveilings, is the tentative budget amount for next year is one hundred and eighty-one million, two-hundred-seventy-six-thousand, three-hundred-nine dollars. Right now, that's still a relatively fluid number. I mean, most of it is there, obviously, or else we wouldn't have gotten to that number. But one of the things that I think is important to point out is the fact that even though this presentation will be over in a few minutes, or not, depending on the questions, tomorrow, Patrick and the whole team sits down together and say, all right, are we done with this budget? What else do we need? What else do we need to take out? And that overall budget amount could still change a little bit between now and Elsie's presentation in a couple of weeks. Any questions?
Questions from the board?
Sounds really good.
Comments from the board?
I think on the health insurance thing, I know Patrick and I talked a few years ago when it, when it raised quite a bit with the consortium, and there were some people that pulled out of it. And Patrick's opinion at that point was, well, everyone will give you a better price to jump in the first year, but then it'll go back up, and I think your planning in that part has, has been financially very beneficial to us.
I mean, the other thing I would say about that is, so the plan enacted, right, certain benefit changes, and we had to endure a couple of big premium increases. The premium increase this year is one and a half percent, which is very low, far below medical inflation. And we were also, because we've had a couple of good years and we stayed the course, the reserves have been replenished with the plan, so we're in good shape. And frankly, with the tax cap at two, five, seven, you know, we needed to have that room in our budget to squeeze that down and not have, you know, a balloon like we had the other year out of eighteen percent premium increase.
Thank you.
John?
All right, thank you. Thank you very much. Reports, we have two reports on, by Board of Education Committees. Chris, anything on policy?
We sent a bunch of policies over to legal to get, you know, their take on it, there were the wellness policies, the wellness policies for the school, and we have another meeting on the fifth.
And we're going to a, to a meeting?
Oh, we are going to a meeting in Albany. Myself, Stacy, everyone, the whole committee's going.
The whole committee's going.
Lucky. We're all going. I'm driving.
Because we love our, each other's company so much.
Yes, I know, I'm driving. I know, I'm driving.
On purpose.
When is that, son? I don't have the...
It's the third. It's the third.
You're driving a bus.
I changed my dentist's...
Yeah, what a gal.
He's treating for breakfast.
There'll be more to follow.
He's treating for breakfast, too.
Awesome.
Dawn, any Orange County School Boards Association?
There has not been a meeting since we last met.
Right. I didn't forget you. Dawn, Facilities Committee?
And, yeah, we've had a fairly active few weeks. I think Patrick's probably going to report on some things, but I would like to, things are looking extremely good right now. We haven't, we've gotten the bids back, I'll let Patrick cover that, but things are going very well, and the way that the bids were organized gives us a lot of options. I think we're going to be very pleased with what the outcome of this is. We're going to be able to configure it in a way that's going to be very, very beneficial to the public. The other thing is, I do want to mention from an audit committee standpoint that, again, I'll let the operations side of it take credit for it, but the, the one comment I do want to talk about, and it relates to facilities and everything else, is the comments that the state has been making about what a difference this audit has been since the previous audit. And the praise for the way that Monroe Woodbury is handling their money, is being fiducially responsible, is just really, really amazing. And on top of putting together a budget, Patrick's had to kind of deal with this whole, you know, groups of auditors sitting around looking over his shoulder, so him and his, yeah, he saw his hair. Him and his team have done a great job with that, but he's...
Next year, he'll look like Greg.
Something about grass and roads or parkways or something.
But I, but I do think it is, it is worth pointing out because one of, one of the main reasons that we're here as board members is to be fiducially responsible and look at the accounting, and the team that we have doing it is just getting huge praise from the state on the fantastic job that they've done at managing our finances and just being very, very responsible with spending and cost control.
Patrick, you want to amplify?
Yeah, just a couple of things about the Facilities Committee. So the bid openings were yesterday, and as Dawn mentioned, the news was very good, you know, that can go either way. So we were at or under budget on all of the five contracts. I think there was one for the, the conversion of the baseball field to a softball field that was a little out of line, but it gives us a lot of flexibility with the ad alternates, which are like optional items that we can elect to buy or not buy. And so I would recommend, or, you know, we have mostly the committee here, maybe after, we could talk about having a meeting next week on April 2nd in the afternoon. I don't know everyone's availability, but we need to sort of make some decisions about those ad alternates quickly, and, and then hopefully we get that all sorted out, and we'll award our bids on April 10th at that meeting. Lan is still, still sort of analyzing everything, but, you know, the gist of it is, it went as well as it could have.
That's a Tuesday afternoon?
That's a Tuesday afternoon.
Yeah, I can't listen. Yeah, I can't listen and I, I teach then, but I'll catch up on that.
Okay.
We'll finalize after this and figure it out.
Okay. Yeah. But, you know, it's still a very aggressive timeline. I want to sort of warn everybody about that. This whole project, we, you know, we said we need to do something. We're going to fix a longstanding problem. And so, we don't have a shovel in the ground yet. So, so far, so good. But, you know, it'll be, let's hope for good weather this summer because that can derail us this spring. And, you know, and that's it. And we can talk about the meeting.
That is one of our biggest risks. I mean, we're basically building, we're modifying a swamp, which is our current football field. So, we are at high risk of rain, of weather conditions. But I'd also like to thank Lori Pock, who has, has done a great job of anticipating all of that. And she's already rescheduled a lot of the games this, this spring. And she's also come up with a plan for the fall in the likely event that it runs over because of the field conditions. But, and I'll let Elsie go through some of the things that Lori had pointed out, some risks. And the, the team has already made some huge advantage, contracts to eliminate some of the risks that we have if, if the field takes longer than normal, which as Patrick pointed out, we can't control the rain. And we're basically in a swamp, so.
So, Patrick, did you want to speak about the fact that we are looking to contract? Because we have some concerns as Lori starts to move around these games, the need for busing is going to increase, you know, tremendously. So, if you want to speak a little bit about what we're doing on our end to make sure that we have transportation for our athletic teams?
So, we, we issued a bid recently for, you know, some of three to five buses that we would be buying daily to essentially supplement our fleet for athletic trips.
Renting, right, basically?
Essentially, yeah. We'd be contracting it. So, I think it's next week, the bid opening would occur. And, you know, what we're, I think what we need, we talked about the shortage of drivers, there are certain days where there's a lot going on. There are field trips, there's athletic trips. We anticipate more, a greater need for, for more athletic transportation. So, this would be a supplement. And we're going to sort of see how it goes, pilot it, if you will, this spring. And, you know, I think that with that supplement, as I said, three to five additional buses daily, you know, it'll, it'll be fine. It'll be what we need to do to get everybody where they need to go.
Yeah.
All right.
Once, once ground is, you know, they spread ground, are we going to be updated on a monthly basis? Or the community and the board have some sort of idea of
Sure.
where we're at? How much is getting done? What's getting done? What's next? So on and so forth? Or have any?
Can we update on Board grams?
Well, we could probably, I think we would probably put it on the website.
I would think that the community would want to know as well.
We put it on the website?
I think we should let the community know where we are.
The one thing we caution is that we could be way ahead of schedule. And if we get rain, it could throw us back. So, to me, the most important thing is the fantastic job that the cabinet and Elsie has done at planning for the potential things that could delay us and not allowing those to impact our students and decreasing that, those risks by, you know, looking at the busing contracts and other things. I think that's, that's been fantastic is to stay ahead of that.
I also just want to say, I also would like to thank Lori for her input on the Facilities Committee and the field project. She's done a lot of work and stepped up. And I appreciate it.
And proactively. So, thank, because we were talking the other day, and he reached out to him, and he said, "Actually, it's already done." She did a lot of the legwork.
All right. That takes care of committees. Report by Christian Hess, our student rep.
All right. So, on Monday, I had the opportunity to meet with all the schools except for the high school because we met before previously, a few weeks back with our student experience team. And I have to say, it was a really successful day. I enjoyed it a lot. The students had a lot of great input and stuff they liked to talk about. I addressed to them. I told them that they should be really honest with me. Everything that they tell me, it's for the benefit of them. I discussed, like, I mean, some of the younger kids, they didn't understand what the Board of Education was. Kind of went over that a little bit.
Either do it, wait, wait.
They probably thought they were Board of Education.
Oh, boy.
So, talked about that a little bit. And then, a lot of the, actually, a lot of, like, North Main, Central Valley, and Pine Tree, they, they had a lot of similarities, but they do have some of their differences. But then I also told them, you know, I want to hear, like, the good and the bad. Because that's, that's really what it's about. I mean, great that it's good stuff that you're telling me, but also want to hear some of the bad stuff. So, a lot of the common similarities between Smith Claude and Sapphire, they love everything. They love, let me tell you, they love specials, they love art, sham, recess, being with the friends. They love writing because it, like, they love being creative and write about whatever they want, being with their friends. And I thought this was pretty insightful from, one of the students mentioned that they want school later. So, that, that's kind of.
Like more school?
Like a longer day?
Like a, like a, come in later.
Come in later.
We're starting.
And I wasn't expecting to hear that from a little, you know, flagrant.
Yeah.
So.
Well, they're saying that that's something that is beneficial to some people. Some children can learn better later on.
Right.
Waking up later.
For work. Where they can go in late.
So, then, some of, like, the similarities between North Main, Central Valley, and Pine Tree, where they, they all want extended recess. They love music. They love the drama clubs that go on. They think that's really good because it kind of brings homeschool together. And they like a little, you know, a little something like that they can look forward to and watch. This is something that is very similar. Now, bullying does occur, as we all know. But, you know, those elementary schools, they don't really have social media yet. They're a younger age. So, they do have, like, some bullying, like, on buses. Like, that's kind of like a common thing I've heard from those schools. So, I talked about how there used to be, like, bus attendants, and then they would be removed, and then bullying would reoccur. So, that's one of the concerns from one of the students from North Main. Now, another thing from North Main, which is, I thought this was pretty smart. And this dated back from when I went to North Main. The Cubbies at North Main, they're not like lockers. They're not secure. And they're not, you know, they're not going to protect all your stuff. So, there has been situations where students have stolen other, you know, items of other students. So, that's even happened way back then, when, when Mr. Crowe was my principal at North Main. So.
I'm supposed to say that?
So, that was a concern. One of the things that they really do like, they made some major improvements to the library at North Main, which the students love. There's a whole bunch of, it's like designed as a castle. It's like a nice place to hang out and stuff. So, I really like that. Another thing, I know, we really don't really have any control over, but they would like to have the option to type or write on state tests. Now, I mean, not a lot of students are proficient at typing. I know, I'm not really, yet. So, that was just something. But I know we don't really have any control over that. But I told them, like, "Tell me anything you want." So, that was something they threw out there.
That's good.
What else? They love mozzarella sticks. That, that's the best thing.
It's the mozzarella sticks again, every year.
Yes. That goes across most.
Yeah.
Yeah. Um.
That's everywhere.
Yes.
It's free mozzarella Monday. That's where, yeah.
Let me see. They talked about gym classes becoming a little too competitive, and that causes outbursts, which eventually leads to bullying. And that, that was a concern across all three schools, elementary schools. So, that was, you know, something. And then, for E and L students, there was a concern where a teacher would, you know, reach out to a student who was proficient in English and Spanish. And he would have that student help out with, you know, some of the other students who weren't, you know, so proficient in those languages. So, that student's concern was that the student who's helping them out isn't really getting, you know, a full, sort of, like, I don't know, do you really call that, like, good learning time, I guess you could say? He was concerned. And he, he kind of wanted how, like, like another separate teacher to, like, help out with, you know, Spanish and English. So, that kid wouldn't have to go out of his way and help out during class time when he should be learning about other things. So, these kids were really, really honest and smart. And I was impressed with what they had to say. So, let me see. Now, we're going to middle school. Some of the things that they really liked, there's like a running club there that sixth graders are allowed to participate in because sixth graders aren't really allowed to join sports. And so, I talked to one of the sixth graders, and she really, really thought it was a great idea how they have that there. And they really like how there's more freedom in the middle school, more so than, like, some of the elementary schools. So, glad to hear that. Some of their concerns were, you know, now they're up age where they have cell phones, and there's social media bullying going around. So, that's definitely, you know, something we all know about. And then, one of the other students mentioned how not too many people are open about talking to guidance counselors. And, you know, students of that age aren't, you know, that's like first introduction to guidance counselors. And so, I guess, like, that's, you know, something that should change or, you know, be more aware about. And so, we brought up the point of morning show. I told them about the morning show, which is in high school, and maybe that they should incorporate it into the middle school somehow. And maybe get across a lot of points like news and, you know, student government, councils, and all that kind of stuff. So, and which could even bring about, like, guidance counselors and making arrangements with them. And another thing that middle school students would like to add is, like, another minute to get to class because they feel a little stressed. I mean, more so the sixth graders than the eighth graders. But, I mean, I don't know.
It's part of that running program, I think.
Yes. And another thing, one of the students mentioned how they wish they could see friends in different houses because they've met with them before, like, sports outside of school, like, clubs outside of school, and other friends with them. But then, when they go to school, they don't really get to see them as often as they would like because of the houses. I don't really know if there's much, you know, anything you could really do about that. But that's something that they mentioned. That's basically it. So, I just want to thank principals for arranging these meetings with me. It's definitely something I really wanted to get done. And I want to thank all the students for, you know, taking time out of their day to meet with me. So, that's it.
Thanks. Thanks. And you're in that committee, too, that I barged in.
Student experience.
The student experience, yes.
Oh, yeah. You know what? There is something I do have to add. A lot of seniors here tonight. And actually, we have, like, a giant group chat. I'm sure you guys are pretty much well aware of that. They want, you know, graduation to be not inside, but outside. But there are some concerns. As we have talked about, Mr. Cassidy and I, that's just something that throwing out because, you know, it's a concern for the seniors. So.
They have been, I've received a couple of emails from students who have said that they're really upset. I really should have brought this email from a young man who gave me an idea. He said, "Why don't we have it at Pine Tree?" But then he ended it with, "I know that the administration in the school district will make the right decision for us because you care about us," basically is what he said. And I appreciate that. And I think that a lot of people are, at this point, they're a little upset about the change of venue. And, and what they need to know is that we have one of the largest high schools in Orange County, where, where like that large family that really can't go to certain places because there's so many of you. So, that's, that's our issue. And if we were to do it outside, we'd always have to have a Plan B. So, if I did it on, and I'm going to speak about the Pine Tree, if we did it on the Pine, the soccer field at Pine Tree, if it were to rain, we would need to, within a very short period of time, move all of the chairs into the high school. So, we really can't do that. And the reason the decision was made was because it is the best place to do this. We are going to have major construction going on, and there is a real concern for people's safety. And so, as much as, as disappointing it is for the students and the families, because we, we get it. I mean, I had someone send me an email and said, you know, our whole, we had all this family coming. It is, it is one of those decisions that we have to make. Because graduation is the most important event in this district, right? It's the culmination of the work of our students and our staff. And so, we don't want to really leave anything to, to, to chance. And putting it outside on the blacktop is simply not something that we, that would be right to do. And as hard as it is to do that, because I know that everybody, last year was absolutely spectacular, we will have it in the future. But we have had the graduation indoors multiple times. It is always a wonderful event because it's a celebration of our students, and that will not change. And so, if I need to go to the high school and, you know, we'll do a morning show, if people want to email me.
Then I have to be.
Yeah, you think so? You think I need to go there?
Yeah.
Some of the things you're doing with the online video is very, very helpful, you know, because then people can participate real time. And frankly, you know, most of us have been to graduations.
Right. I just, I just.
You get a better view.
It is. It is very. And, and again, our worry is putting people on a blacktop, that it could be very warm. And the fact that we're going to have major construction, a lot of dirt and dust, I don't think that we should expose, A, our students to that, and our families to that. And I know that a lot of people bring their, their parents or their grandparents. And it's, it's, it's not right. And it's, I feel like it's one of those decisions you make when your child, you tell your child you can't do something and they're really upset with you. But you're really doing it because it's in their best interest. So, so I, I will do whatever we need to do. I will go with Mr. Cassidy. We'll talk to groups of students. What I have found, I will tell you, is that high school students are really understandable. You can sit and speak with them and explain something to them, and they get it. I get that they're upset. I really do. And I'm, and I feel bad that they're not going to have the graduation outside. But it is in their best interest. And, and the reason we're having graduation on Wednesday is because that's the last day of school. We've always done graduation on the last day of school. This year, it happens to be Wednesday. So, I know that some people were concerned about as though, that, as they were concerned with that as well. Next year, it goes back to Friday. But that really is dependent upon the schedule that we gave from the state of education. And they tell us when the last day of school is. So, those are a couple of things that I did want to share. I thank you for bringing that up. And we can, I can go and talk to whoever you need me to talk to.
Okay. Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Personnel, do, Matt?
So, before I ask for, for approval on the items listed under personnel, one of the things I do want to recognize is that there's somebody who's on the list as a resignation, and that is Karen Brock.
So, that's why we're not approving this, right?
That's right.
We're voting against it.
We're all voting against it.
November 8th, 2004 was Karen's first, or was her date of hire here in our district. And in those 15 years, I'm sure, there's no doubt that there have been many lives that have been changed because of her, her impact as, as a dean and as an AP and as, as a high school, our high school dean, and then an elementary AP, and then an elementary principal. So, you know, it's up to you whether or not you approve it. But there's going to be lots of explaining to do with all the other things. So, with that, thank you. And. And if you wouldn't mind approving the other items listed under personnel, that's okay.
Do we, do we have a motion to per, per second?
Motion.
Seconded. Anthony? Any further discussion or smarmy remarks? No, there being none. All those in favor? Opposed? So, Carrie, business and financial, Patrick?
I would ask for the approval of the items under the business financial section of the agenda, which include our standard monthly financial reports for January. There's one contract with Community Education Center as for services related to Title III students that are entitled to certain services and allocation. We have obsolete items, library equipment from CV, and student furniture from Pine Tree. And finally, a donation of books, which I think Dr. Hassler would like to speak about.
Sure. One of the, one of the donations that we're asking for approval for is a collection of books that are on display here by the Seti family, who's one of our district families. They're making the donation to our school libraries in recognition of SIKH Awareness Month. That's S-I-K-H, which is next month in the month of April. Sikhism is a religion practiced by about 30 million people across the world. Laura Lerner, our K-12 library coordinator, has already reviewed all of the titles that are going to go into circulation in the school libraries. The timing's actually perfect because Christian mentioned the student experience team that met on March 7. And one of the things that the student experience group of students brought up was how the district needed to improve some of our efforts to support initiatives like this. In that conversation, the students actually brought up Black History Month and Hispanic Heritage Month, and how the district can really use opportunities like that to be able to celebrate. celebrate and raise awareness to some underrepresented communities that, that are within Monro Woodbury. So this is an opportunity for us to be able to do something like that. Combined with this effort, there's also going to be presentations in sixth grade social studies classes because the world religion curriculum is in the sixth grade social studies curriculum, so there's going to be some presentations there at the end of April, also in recognition of SIKH Awareness Month.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion for business and financial?
Motion.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So Carrie, do I have a motion to approve the appointment of election inspectors and administrative support personnel for the vote?
Motion.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any questions about that? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So Carrie, do I have a motion to approve the appointment of Board of Registration for the annual budget vote?
Motion.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Any questions? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So Carrie, do I have a motion to approve the resolution for an impartial hearing, item 16.1?
Motion.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So Carrie, do I have a motion to approve the arrangement of the recommended placements made by the Committee on Special Education and Committee on Preschool Special Education, item 17.1.2.3.4?
Motion.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
So Carrie, reports by board and central office, Bargoff.
Ooh.
That was a curve ball.
Thank you, Mr. [inaudible]. And all the students for a really good lead presentation. Thank you for Code of Conduct Committee for a very informative presentation. I attended the high school library open house hosted by Mr. Cassidy and librarians and they really helped us go through the process and then showed us how they changed the traditional library space to more active learning spaces and more helpful spaces for the students.
All right. Eric?
I'd also like to say thanks to the high school and middle school lead students as well as the advisors who made these amazing experiences possible. I'd also like to give a shout out to the family members of the advisors who hold down the fort to allow the advisors the ability to do this amazing work. It's true. I mean, stuff like that doesn't happen in a matter of minutes. It takes hours and hours and hours and somebody else has to hold down the fort to give them the opportunity to be able to do that.
So where are you staying tonight?
One of the themes of the high school and middle school lead initiative is service. And for me, over the last couple of weeks, I've had an opportunity to see some of the amazing service initiatives that, that our kids do. I, I saw the Bye Bye Birdie performance for the seniors and, you know, the kids do that and they, they give the, the senior citizens, they give the senior citizens a meal afterwards, which is awesome. We had the Interact Wizards game where the kids come out and, and, you know, all of that money goes to the Interact Club, which is about service. We had a dozen Interact kids go to Valley View Nursing Home to have a round of Big No on a Saturday afternoon to support some of the residents there. There are so many different things that our kids do in the community around service and it's just a, a great thing. Good luck this weekend to the Caston crew of Adams Family. Thank you to the Code of Conduct Committee for their presentation. I can speak firsthand, the review of the Code of Conduct is no small undertaking, but you're doing very important and amazing work. Congratulations to Team Hutter and Team McInerney who advanced to the Odyssey the Mind World Finals. And also, April is also Autism Awareness Month, so Tuesday is Light It Up Blue as well. So that also kind of continues the initiative that I was speaking about earlier.
Thank you. Patrick?
I'd just also like to thank the presenters this evening and especially thanks to Mr. Kravitz and the staff for helping with and playing a big role in helping this year's budget. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I think I raised on that after what he said for you.
Matt, you're blushing all over.
At least I could do or say, right?
I think this is our first board meeting since the North Main Project Pit.
Oh, yes.
Is that right? So, I love, those videos have been great, congratulations. And I think that, that, you know, the effort on the parts of many, many people, I mean, I think we said 25,000 votes and if you walked into the high school during any given day during the lunch periods and you saw the operation that they had outside the cafeterias where they just had a bank of laptop computers and every day, kids would come in, use their multiple email addresses to sign up, it was incredible. So congratulations because those kids will, will benefit for many years to come. Everybody's already kind of said what I wanted to say, so have a nice night, everybody.
Thank you. All right.
I want to thank the lead students and congratulations, congratulate them on a job well done. Thanks for presenting the Code of Conduct. It's, it's great to see that we are evolving, that we're finding solutions, we're researching and supporting, you know, the students with emotional and mental, you know, needs. Thank you to Matt and Pat. Matt and Pat. Okay. You know, I fear, I thought we were going like, you know, two steps forward with the whole bullying and stuff and then after listening to Christian, I kind of felt like we're going like five steps back. So, you know, I, I know that there's a lot of work to still do and that, you know, you have our support and I think that it's, you know, when, when you mentioned about the elementary, you know, the second graders to the fifth graders in North Main that, that talked about that on the bus, you know, maybe that's something we need to look at.
Right.
That maybe second graders shouldn't be with fifth graders or however that works out, you know, maybe that's what's, what's going on, you know?
Yeah, because you don't really think about it so much like going on on the bus. I mean, I mean, you do, but like, it's not, you think it's going to really happen in the school so much.
True.
Or maybe there could be a buddy system with fifth graders, you know, sort of like the mentoring system we have. It could be a bus system so that they're, they're looking after the younger ones and it's their job and it's just sort of like a service thing.
Like you and I do.
A buddy system.
Safe school ambassadors maybe on a fifth grade level, looking out for the second graders, you know? Okay, so that was that and looking forward to going to the Adams Family because I love all the shows that the students put on. They are just amazing. And sorry to hear that, Karen, you're all leaving, but I, I want to wish you luck, success, peace and health on your next journey. Thank you. Thank you for your service.
Stacy?
I want to say thank you to the presenters tonight and I know that behind the scenes, we have a new system in place for the board members that I want to say thank you to all the administrators and your staff who are inputting all of the wonderful activities that are happening in the district. I have honestly too many to list because it was a really great couple of weeks, but I just, I wanted to kind of put out there to the parents because I try to say as much as I can to the parents that talk to me about stuff. I have four kids. What did you do at school today? Nothing. How was school today? Good. I just want to say I was able to go from elementary school all the way up to the high school and the amount of stuff that our kids are being impacted with every day, whether it be Parp at Smith Clover, Star Lab at Sapphire, ADAC at the high school, the middle school play. I mean, there really is so much that I truly hope that the kids and parents can really appreciate, aside from their education that they're getting, a lot of the extracurricular stuff that's going on in the district because it really is amazing and it's the best part that I love is to get to go, even though I'm going to agree with Christian that I was the mystery reader at Smith Clover and I had to give three clues. I walked in, they're like, "Who are you?" They had no idea who I was. So it's kind of, but it's still fun. I don't need to be recognized everywhere I go. So it was just great to be able to go and be able to be with those kids because they really are the best at, at the K-1. And with that, I just want to wish Mrs. Brock all the best because I've had the pleasure of working with her through PTA for many years at Sapphire and she's a truly great individual, so I wish her the best.
Well, they may end up knowing us tonight after the selfies that we took.
Yeah, we did. We took selfies tonight. That was high school kids, though.
That's okay. I'm sure they'll be posting them and making fun of us.
No, they wouldn't do that. Elsie's worried they're going to crop our heads.
Anthony, thank you to all the presenters. The lead conference seemed like it was very successful. Thank you Bargoff for putting this nice television here so we can see.
It's so nice. Our necks are. I have to tell you, it's great.
I got a chance to also see the, the Star Gate or?
Star Lab.
Star Lab, I'm sorry. In Smith Clover, it was absolutely tremendous. I saw the Smith Clover art show, which was great. I saw Bye Bye Birdie production, which was unbelievable. The middle school production was just out of this world. I'm looking forward to the Adams Family production. And I did not get a chance to see the Harlem Wizards game, but I heard your backwards jam really brought down the house.
It's very true. Sadly, we lost, my, my prediction was not fulfilled.
All right, well, good evening, everyone, and thank you, Mrs. Brock. Dan?
Congratulations to the lead conference presenters. It's an awesome experience. Bye Bye Birdie was fantastic at the middle school. Looking forward to Adams Family. My neck is feeling great, Bargoff. I'm looking straight ahead. And I want to wish Karen best of luck. No one else is going to bring your light bulbs, so.
Oh, there's still time. I can get a few more of those.
True, very true. And everybody else, have a great night.
Chris?
I'm glad I'm going before dawn. That's why I was going to come all the way here. I want to congratulate North Main on their, their playground. I want to thank all the presenters. I want to congratulate all the Odyssey of the Mind winners. Every day, I seem to get an update from Elsie on this school and that school, that they're all doing well. Thank Karen for everything. Good luck in the future and good night. There we go, there we go.
So, you know, Stacy and I kind of saved wavelength a lot and I was thinking as we started that way that there's so much going on in this district that we all have a ton of things that we can go to. And it's a privilege and it's an honor to get to experience all the different schools and all the awesome things that our kids are going.
So, just a few things that I did that Stacy didn't do was I went with Elsie and John and Eric and Mr. Cassidy to the Legislative Education Breakfast that was held by Central Hudson Region, where it was our state and local leaders and politicians were talking about issues that are facing our school district today, like unsanated mandates and health and safety and social and emotional learning. And then I spent a lot of time at the high school. There was a lot of things going on there. I got to see the ADAC presentation on vaping, Stars Club did a, they hosted a speaker about living with AIDS. And then John Jones came in from Stop DEW and he talked about the dangers of distracted driving. And then I attended a training for one love with the Health Department, which is educating our young people on healthy and unhealthy relationships. And then in keeping with the CARES Initiative, we brought back the, a speaker, Kathy Sullivan from Taylor's Message and she talked about underage drinking and the inevitable poor decisions that are made associated with that. And she was an amazing speaker that I think really resonated with the students. I also want to say thank you to the library for inviting us in to tour the updated space for growing needs of our students. And the high school students that were awarded the science research competition awards this past weekend, shout out to them. And the middle school omors and the play at the middle school was great and looking forward to Adams Family.
Mr. Beeler?
There's not a lot else to say. I think you guys have covered most of it. Again, the, the thing that I would like to emphasize is all of the things that the district does. And when you look at what's going on in other districts in our area and the, and the challenges that they're having making it happen and all of the sacrifices that everyone in this district has made in order to have the funding, to do the finances, to everything else, I think I constantly get, you know, comments like, "Oh my God, how, how do you guys do that? How does Monroe Woodbury manage to do all these things and still be so financially responsible with, with the public's money?" So I think, you know, this last week has been a real culmination of that, where we're doing the budget, we're getting audited and everything's looking very positive and the, and the projects that have been put together have been really, really done well. And, and I think that we are the envy of many of the districts in, in the area and I think that it's, it's primarily because of the sacrifices that not just the cabinet make, that everyone in the district makes, that focuses on the students and makes, makes sure that happens, so.
Thank you. Suzanne?
First, I'd like to congratulate all the lead participants that it was really amazing experience and what they took away from it seems like it's something they're going to carry for the rest of their lives. So I'd really like to congratulate them. And I'd also like to thank all the presenters and congratulate North Main on winning the contest to get their playground. And Karen, how are we going to celebrate that? This is her birthday.
Trust me, we will always celebrate that.
As long as you promise. And I'd like to wish everybody a good night.
Thank you. Christian?
I just want to say, thank you to all the presentations. Lead seemed like a really successful trip, a great slideshow they put on. I want to say that there was a great lecture or presentation at the high school a few, probably last week on Taylor Lee Meyer, who passed away unfortunately due to unfortunate decisions. And it was like a really good presentation for the students to hear and make better decisions. I want to wish Mrs. Brock a healthy and happy retirement and I want to thank North Main and not thank North Main. I want to congratulate North Main on a new playground. Good night.
Donna?
The budget vote is less than two months away, so if you are new to the district and you haven't registered with the local Board of Elections, you can still register a vote for the, with us. The registration is online. In the upcoming week, we'll also have absentee ballot applications online and in the superintendent's office as well if you will be out of town for the vote. So, that's another process. And I just want to wish everyone a happy spring and enjoy the warmer weather.
Thank you. Elsie?
I want to thank all the presenters and especially the students because I always like to hear from them. I thought the story about the butterfly effect is so appropriate for us to talk about here because it really is a reflection of our district. We are doing and making some really awesome decisions and ultimately, it's, everything is about our, our students, right? So I, I thank you. I genuinely thank you for this and, and all the wonderful things that are going on. And we still have more things going on. This Saturday, we have our Elementary Special Olympics at Bosse, so if you can attend that, it's really a wonderful event. We used to, I think we hosted it most, this is going to be, for two years in a row, we hosted it. So we're going to go to Bosse's. It's probably not going to be as nice as when we hosted. I can't believe I said that, but I really do.
Nearly. Almost as nice. Super, super, super close.
But just not, I mean, I, I think what I, what I loved about when we hosted it is that the community came out, there were volunteers everywhere. I mean, there is such love for this, but I, I had to say it, it's, we just do it so much better.
Not so much better.
Okay, just a little bit better.
Yeah.
But, but anyway, it is, it is an awesome, if you can attend, attend because our kids are just adorable and they're so excited and it's just wonderful to see them, so please go out and, and, and support that. Something else is coming up. We are going to start looking for our next student representative.
Right, yes.
Yes.
I will be probably on the morning show talking about it and I will make a, arrange a date to stay after school for like three or so minutes, answer questions.
Good. So we are looking seniors, class of 2020. I think Mr. Cassidy is sending out an email to all the highs, all the seniors. We are, we want kids to try, you know, to, to tell us why they want to be in this chair. It's a really important position. I also want to thank the district and the community because you voted on this. We actually put, this was part of our budget vote. We wanted to have a student representative. It's part of us listening to stakeholders. The most important stakeholders, you might not like me to say this, but it's true, is our students. They are the most important stakeholders. me to say this, but it's true, is our students. They are the most important stakeholders. To have them sitting here means a lot to all of us because they speak, they just tell us like it is, right? So I, I look forward to and I encourage our students to really apply to be a member of the Board of Education, the student representative. And with that, I say a good night.
Applications are out right now.
They are.
And you don't need typing skills, right?
Maybe.
No, I think it's important, I mean, that committee and, and your input and just the ability of the students to be able to approach anybody with ideas and suggestions and put them in the context of, of a constructive idea rather than just complaining about something. And we get some really good ideas from, from the, from the students and which is terrific. I have a couple of announcements. We lost a couple of people of our community are, one of our retired teaching assistants, Rochelle Wilson, passed away. Her husband, Robert, is the pastor of St. Paul's Lutheran Church. And Herman Galbert passed away at the age of 91. He was a past member of the Board of Education and its president and served his community in many other ways, ambulance corps and the like. And our condolences to those, to those families. The next meeting we have, you are going to be presenting the superintendent's recommendation on the budget?
Yes, I am.
And that next meeting will be at Smith Clove on the 10th of April. And it will start at 5:00 with an executive session, which is in training for the board. And the regular meeting will start at, at 6:00. And congratulations to, to everybody and to Brock, who is going on a motorcycle trip across the country with just a sleeping bag. That's what I've heard. That's what I've heard. And we wish her well. And also in, in, you know, you're learning to be a hang gliding instructor. I think that's all, these are all terrific things for you in the future. Right. And, and with that, I need a, a motion to adjourn the meeting. It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Opposed? Meeting adjourned.